Good evening Wakefield. I call to order the town council meeting of November 18th, 2024 at 7:02 PM. Item two is pledge allegiance. If everyone would please rise, please flag and join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone attendance. I see a full complement of all seven town councillors present today in the building. Item four, public engagement. Do we have any public engagement this evening? Sherry.
Yes, we do. Julie is the name.
Okay, could you bring Julie over please?
I am doing that.
Okay.
Hello, can you see me?
We can Julie, and we can hear you too. If you could just state your name and address for the record, and I think you know the drill, three minutes for public participation and we're not doing back and forth, we're just taking your comments.
Thank you. Julie Scott, Central Street. The historic Lakeside Dirt Path connecting Beacon Street to the Lakeside Avenue is home to some of the oldest trees in Wakefield. Directly abutting it is the Temple Israel Cemetery, which is listed on the National Historic Register. The Temple Israel Cemetery, along with the Lakeside Cemetery and the town-owned dirt pathway are located on what is called a KAME terrace, spelled K-A-M-E, which was formed when a glacial lake deposited lake bottom sediment around an isolated lake block. KAME terraces are frequently locations for historic cemeteries because the terraces have a sandy and gravelly soil which allows easy excavation for graves. There's intended town work to be done on that pathway. There has not been a land survey, I do believe there's been an elevation survey. I hope that the town council will revisit the ARPA money being used to alter this dirt pathway. Natural KAME banks, such as the one that holds, literally holds up the pathway, and as are all banks, are protected under the Wetlands Protection Act and are they themselves animal habitats. Alterations to this walkway would be harmful to the ecologically sensitive area that it resides in. I hope that the town council revisits this part of the work planned for the area and agrees that it is actually not a necessary project. If it is work that will move forward, I request that the lakeside structure policy be followed so that interested groups like FOLQ and others in the community are given a 30-day time period in which to give input prior to town council approval being given. The Conservation Commission is continuing its public hearing tomorrow night in regard to this ARPA-funded work. The KAME terrace that is making up the dirt pathway is actually held together solidly, very strongly by bound tree roots that are already there from the current 200-year-old trees. Running heavy excavation vehicles over these roots would be, I feel, very harmful in ways that may take four to five years for us as a community to see the damage. Some of the town's oldest trees may be harmed as a result. Many of the roots holding up the path are from trees that are actually owned by the Temple Israel Cemetery. The town must not harm those trees, and a survey has not been referred to as to show where our land is and where their land is. Looking at mass mapper, it seems that their land actually may extend into the dirt path in question. Right now, the beautiful path is firmly held in place by nature. It's really easy to walk on or roll via a wheelchair or a roller later. I took my dad there lots of times. There has also been mentioned that some of what is planned may eventually alter the pH of the soil, which may eventually harm the trees. The pathway as it is provides a magnificent tree canopy, and if the trees and their roots are harmed, the canopy will die. I wrote to you and I asked that both Beacon and Lakeside Ave be revised and updated for parking and ADA compliance, and I thank you for hearing me, but the Lakeside Parkway was not a concern, and I feel it does not need to be touched or altered in any way, and I feel that the natural habitat would be best left undisturbed. As I watched the presentation of the work on Lakeside Ave and Beacon Street given to you a number of months ago, I was not under the impression that the dirt pathway was still under such, was going to have such extensive work.
Excuse me Julie, you're a little bit over, I was trying to give you a wrap-up chance there.
Okay, sorry. No, I'm done, I've made my point. I hope you will reach out to the Conservation Commission and maybe reconsider this work. There might be some funds that could be reallocated to another project. Thanks for, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Sherry, do we have any other public engagement tonight?
No, I don't see any hands.
Okay, seeing none. Item five is presentation and updates, presentations and updates. 5A is 460 to 466 and 472 Main Street status update. I believe councillor, you're up?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, we have a PowerPoint.
We do. Sorry about that Sherry.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know there was a PowerPoint.
Is that okay? Is that a problem? It's only just really, I'm going to show a couple of graphs, that's all. That might be helpful, just to, here we go, just a couple, just a couple of pictures. Thank you Mr. Chair. For the record Attorney Brian McGrail on behalf of 460-472 Main Street. With me tonight is Andrea Ciros, he is part of the ownership group of the property. Scott Fitzpatrick is our construction supervisor, and Peter Sandors from Phoenix Architects is the architect on this project. I think, as you're aware, this is the Mallese Building, you can see a picture of that on your screen, everybody's pretty familiar with this. The project, just to refresh your memory, involves the redevelopment of this site into 16 residential units. Out of those 16, two are studio, one-bedroom studios, 10 are one-bedroom units, and four are two-bedroom units. This was done as part of our inclusionary zoning, so that means that 18% of these units will be affordable, three of these units will be affordable in count towards our subsidized housing inventory, towards our 40B count. In addition, this is a mixed-use project, so in addition to the residential units above, the restoration will involve up to six retail or commercial units on the first floor. It's up to six, some might be combined depending on how big perhaps a restaurant goes in, wants to use two or three of them, but it's a maximum of six on the first floor. So when it's done, that's the existing conditions. What has been approved by the Board of Appeals is this. A fairly attractive building that looks kind of like it's been there for a while, that was the goal in the design process, that it kind of grabs onto some of the historic aspects of the downtown area. I know it's a concern of your council that this project move as expeditiously as possible, and you've requested that we come before you with periodic updates, and that's why we're here tonight. This project was approved by three zoning decisions that were filed, were issued by the Board of Appeals, clocked in with the town clerk on February 22, 2024, which is less than a year ago. We were before you in June with an update, and what we told you at that time was that we were working with a structural engineer on the project and also our architect in order to come up with plans that would be sufficient to file for a building permit. This is a very complicated project because this is a very old building, the back portion of it is warehouse made of concrete block, the front has some brick sides on it and some wood construction, so, and it was, it was added on to over the years, so it's imperative that our structural engineer have a good grasp on this, not only for being able to construct it properly, but also being able to plan for a safe construction process where it's in such tight quarters near the downtown. So that was in June, and at that time we told you it would take us approximately four months to complete that process. So here we are in November, you know, approximately five months, and we're pretty much done, meaning we actually expected the structural engineer report today. It's a few days out, he didn't have it today. He's been working diligently with our architect Peter Sandors over the past four to five months, they've had frequent visits at the property. So that's allowed Peter to get his plans to the point of being construction-ready. And what that means is, once that's complete with them working together, we will be in a position to file for a building permit with the building inspector for the project. We are very confident that that application will be able to be submitted before the end of the year. Once that happens, Scott plans on working with the building inspector to be able to do as much work prior to the building permit issuing as possible, perhaps some pre-structural work that will need to take place in the inside of the building, and Scott will be able to give you a little more detail on the construction process that will take place. Once the building permit application is submitted, the building inspector will require us to have a peer review, especially considering, you know, where this building is located, downtown quarters, et cetera, and we have no control over that process. We've seen it take anywhere from a month to three, depending on how busy the peer review consultant is. But again, we don't think we'll lose significant time by that because Scott's confident that he'll be able to work with the building inspector to get some work going while that review was taking place. So that's, that's where we are status-wise. If you're interested, Scott can provide you some details on the construction. I will tell you that we have conditions that have been issued by the Board of Appeals as part of this approval, and one of them is, which I'm sure you will be interested in, is it states that prior to commencing any site work demolition, because there will be certain demolition on the exterior of the building, indoor construction, the applicant should meet with the police department, fire department, Department of Public Works, and building department to discuss items including but not limited to delivery times, sequencing, and procedures related to the work, and applicant should comply with any requirements of those departments. The reason for that is because of its proximity right on Main Street, right near the middle school, so the zoning board does not want deliveries of construction materials, for example, taking place while the kids are getting into school or getting out to avoid any conflicts in that regard, to make sure that the sidewalks are kept safe for pedestrians, and that will all be hashed out with those various department heads. We anticipate having that meeting within the next month to get ready for construction. What our structural engineer did determine, we were hoping to keep a portion of the front of the building that you see, because you can kind of see the cinder block warehouse in the back, we were hoping to keep a portion of the front, but I think, and Scott, maybe you can elaborate on this, that we've determined that a significant part is actually, that is actually going to have to be completely razed and rebuilt because of its inability to support the upper level. So if I may, Mr. Chair, perhaps Scott could, now that you know our timeframe on permitting, perhaps he could go through how he sees the sequencing of the construction of this project if that is of any interest to the council.
Sure, a couple of quick questions though, are you, are you, do you go for two different permits, one for the demolition and then, or is it one single permit?
No, we already have demolition.
We have an interior demolition permit, so it would be a second demolition permit to take the single-story portion of the building down, which, that's all the brick portion where the restaurant was, and I think the barber shop. That single-story section will come down, the brick, the brick can't support the second floor, there's some foundation work, the building gets cut back about, I forget, it's about 15 feet or?
Close to 18.
18 feet on the, so there's foundation work, there's some reinforcing work to the existing foundation for the new wood frame building. That's the, you know, and that's some of the work we're hoping to get ahead of the actual full building permit when we apply. There's some other demolition work with the block building in the back, which is the newest addition, and then the rear section of the two-story wood frame on the far right, that's where the parking garage goes, so there's a significant amount of demolition in there on the first floor level, ensuring that needs to be done.
What's your timeframe for that portion of the work before you actually start to construct?
Best-case scenario, if the, if the weather holds out and we can be ready for a demo permit, probably mid-December. The asbestos abatement was done prior to any of the interior demo, so all the utilities are cut except the water, so we do have to cut the water that goes into that portion of the building.
So are you looking at a spring/summer building, construction, actual construction timeframe, or is that?
We could be building sooner depending on the weather. I mean, if we have a winter like last year, that'll be very beneficial for us in this project, but if we have a winter like 2015, we'll be shoveling snow every day trying to get to the job.
Right, sure. Scott, I'm sorry Scott, didn't mean to cut anybody off, do you, do you want to add to this before I turn it over to councillor questions?
Well, we, I just, it's refreshing, we had said that it's about an 18-month construction process, but Scott, maybe you can elaborate on that. When you say 18 months, you'll, you know, a lot of that is work that will be finished work on the inside?
Correct, that's, you know, from start of construction to occupancy permit, you know, we're probably closer to nine months, 10 months before the outside actually starts to look like Peter's drawings. You know, we're looking at something more of a finished product in the square there while we're working on inside finishes.
Looking at it from, you know, my limited construction experience, is there a zoning issue with why you're not just tearing the whole thing down?
No.
Because it's kind of a mismatch of kinds of construction, a block building in the back and, I just, it sounds like you're picking at what you're going to take down when it'd be just as easy as to tear the whole thing down.
Yeah, so, I mean, Peter, can you elaborate on that because that's your expertise?
We debated it a fair amount, and we probably had three different visits with the structural engineer in the building.
Yep.
Determined it's five different buildings. And there's, and you're right, there's several types of construction in there. We still, our owner still feels that he'd like to maintain as much of it as we can. And now the structure is being developed that way.
Okay.
So using point loads, columns, beam locations are keeping that existing structure. That being said, and I think Brian alluded to it, that whole front that we're looking at here will be all brand new.
And my final question is the fact that when you're doing this, you know, we have vacant stores, you know, further up Main Street that just can't accommodate the various needs of the people who are renting them. Of course, the bread store just closed down because of a major issue with the ventilation system, because, you know, the town's kind of stepped in, helped the next owner of that property in that issue, but the issue is, are you going to have, you know, are you going to have enough flexibility on attracting some good tenants on the first floor? And that, and that involves construction, and that's why I'm concerned about all these various kinds of buildings that you're going from five down to one or two or?
That's a good point. I think, I think the ability to have the six spaces but also have them become two larger spaces or, you know, three and four, there's a good mix in there. And I think during construction, hopefully we'll have some tenants reach out and we can get more particular beyond the facade, but there's definitely flexibility in the plan.
So right now, keeping part of the current mismatch of buildings, there's a cost savings in doing it that way, has to be.
Yeah, that's right.
Councillor Dabrowski?
I think one of the biggest things that, things that stands out from this project in hearing you say it is the owner opted to try to keep this hodgepodge of a building together. It's the cheapest way to do it, is the bottom line, and this is one of the centerpieces of our downtown business corridor that has been an absolute dump for many years, way too many. Any goodwill that this community had towards this project and towards this building has long since been exhausted. And the notion that, when you've been describing all these delays, because you're trying to salvage what really is not, not a good property, let's face it, I mean, the thing should be razed, right? But you're instead trying to, you know, save a buck by not doing that, and I think the whole community suffers as a result of that. And Attorney McGrail is an exceptional attorney, and he does a really good job of representing this project, but let's just cut to it, you're trying to just do this on the cheap, clearly, and we're all feeling the impacts of it. I think back to, I think it was 2023, and this is after I don't even know how many years of sitting in that, in that parade bandstand and watching, and looking over at this unsightly building, and then we heard, oh, there's going to be screening, and it's going to look like this, and we saw some images, and we're like, all right, that's great, at least we have something going up there. We got like some vinyl banners that said, you know, retail coming soon or something ridiculous. So even that wasn't, there wasn't the follow-through from the owner, from the ownership of this building. So at every step along the way, when there's been an opportunity to do the right thing, it's not happened. And we're talking now about this timeline, lest we forget how many years this building sat vacant and has an eyesore to the community. And it was only, I'd like to think, because of the pressure that this council has put on to this, to this ownership, that suddenly something's happening here. I'm confident that this ownership, it was presented to us previously, has a lot of other buildings, I think it even owns like almost an entire length of streets in other communities. They know what they're doing, and this doesn't present as a priority to the ownership whatsoever. And this is a really bad neighbor, and it's been a really bad neighbor for a long time, I'll tell you candidly, sir, and I think we're all really tired of it. And so, you know, hearing, oh, we're just going to try to do this and do that, we're tired of the delays, we're tired of the, oh, let's try to make this work because it'll be cheaper to do it this way, we're tired of the, oh, let's try to salvage what we can because we can save a buck this way. That's not the community mentality here. I see a lot of other projects that are going up, and they're, they're being constructed in a very solid way, I think they're being constructed in a very thoughtful way, and they're being constructed, most importantly, in a more quality way. And this is like, oh, we're going to see what we can do, and we're just kind of like, you know, it feels like you're duct taping five buildings together as best you can to try to put something up that has a decent facade. You know, this isn't a movie set. This isn't something where like in just a couple of years' time, we're going to be okay when it starts to fall into disrepair because of the quality of the materials you've used. And so I really think that there should be some, some reconsideration here about the, how this project is going forward. There is a lot of investment in Wakefield. At the municipal level, we're investing a lot of resources, we're getting a lot of resources from the state and the federal government in order to make sure that we're improving our downtown, and I have zero confidence that this project will be on time or anything like what you're presenting it, it's going to be, because we've heard this again and again, and at some point, you know, fool me once, right? This entire community has fooled, been fooled too many times by this project. I think that the owner has been really derelict in their responsibility to be a good neighbor, I don't see that anywhere, I think that will continue to be the case, and I think the whole community suffers as a result. So if it's not something that this owner can do and do properly, sell it. Sell the property then, let someone come in who will do it right, because I'm not convinced, sir, that you will, and I think it's a real problem. I respect private property rights more than anyone, trust me, but at some point, there has to be, you know, a bit more pressure applied so that the right things happen, and that's not happening here, and I think I speak for a lot of the community when I say that. It's really frustrating and incredibly inexcusable. This isn't your first rodeo, sir. Thank you.
Well, if I could respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, my client, obviously, respect your comments, I will say that it's not going to be a hodgepodge when it's rebuilt. This has been, this went through a biggest review process by the zoning board of appeals. Every project that gets approved by that board, because I'm involved in a lot of them, they inspect the project as it's being developed, as it's being built, they make sure it's built verbatim on what's been presented. We have an incredible team put together, tremendous architect, structural engineer, construction supervisor, responsible owner who is, this is self-financed, this project is self-financed, there's no lender, so a lot of projects right now are not able to go forward because of the interest rates. The money for this project is already there and ready to go. So, you know, I feel bad that you feel that way, but I will tell you, I'm confident that when this is done, you're going to get what you're looking at, and it's going to be something that everybody can be proud of. This is not the only property in town that is not in good state, as we all know, and I'm glad that it is moving forward. I will also add that from what, the last presentation that we made to you, that I made to your board in detail on this, which was in June, we're pretty much right on schedule on what we told you we were going to be at that point. At that point, we said we'd be here doing what we're doing now in four months, we're at about five, so a little bit over, but I'm hoping that we can regain your confidence, councillor Dabrowski, we'll do our best to do that into, I think, Andreas, your goal is to build something that the community's going to be proud of, right?
We have a community of 27,000 people, and I don't think you have the confidence of a single one of those people, candidly. I think you've lost the trust of this entire community, and part of being a member of this community is being responsible, so with all due respect, if your client, Mr. McGrail, is responsible in other communities, that might be, he's demonstrated no such responsibility here. It was us chasing down in order to even get this to where it supposedly is now, and that was after how many years of just sitting there? So I, I don't think that it's realistic to say that he's been a responsible owner or steward of this property, he hasn't. And let's face it, you're putting it together like you are because it's cheaper to do it that way. He could have razed it, he could have built from scratch, I, I don't.
Well, raising, raising it creates other problems, it creates a lot more impact on it, butters, neighbors, downtown.
Temporarily.
Yeah, but it, but, you know, we've determined this is the more efficient way to redevelop that property.
Do you think that this?
And part of the, part of the efficiency is obviously cost. Anybody who's going to develop property has to look at the cost, the pro forma has to work. So, you know, to say that you can just raise the whole building, you know, yeah, maybe double the cost to do that. So now it's not economically and financially feasible to do it. At the end of the day, whether it's rebuilt, rehabbed, reconstructed, or totally demolished, as long as you get the end product, you know, I think that's what matters, and that's what you're going to get.
But if he was concerned about the impact on the neighbors, then where has he been with that concern for the last 10 years?
Well, I'm just saying on the development process of it, that's all. I mean, alls I can say is, we're here tonight, we can't, we can't unring the bell, nobody can do that, so we're here in good faith, we're happy to come back again and give more updates as you so desire. I've given you our timeframes, and, you know, with what's going on with projects now, I believe that the state senate and state representatives passed a permit extension act that potentially is going to be signed by the governor, giving projects two more years to be built because of the economic times and financing circumstances that relate. So a lot of projects right now have been delayed, unfortunately, because of the environment, economic environment that we've been in, so.
I look at Maguire, which is the old Blanchards, they closed at the end of October, and they're already well underway with their construction on that.
That's, that's apples and oranges.
I look at the bread shop and how that was too, they've turned that around in record time, and they've, they're at least showing that they're committed to it. I can't imagine, I know Phoenix does a lot of good work, I can't imagine that there's a lot of projects that, we've seen this level of delay. It's, it's, for years, sat for years, then suddenly at our prompting, then there's these pretty designs, and the next thing you know, we're hearing, haven't had permits pulled yet, it sounds like, you know, it's like, it's too much. It's not you, Mr. McGrail, I understand that, you're just doing the best to represent your client, but I think your client really should do some soul-searching about what his role should be in our community. Thank you.
Councillor Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. You know, I, I mean, I'm not qualified to talk about, you know, kind of new construction versus rehab, I'll leave that to kind of the engineers and the architects. But I do think that, you know, the deadlines that we've talked about do slip here and there, and, you know, we're a little bit behind where we were in June, but those little bits have added up to a long time, I think as councillor Dabrowski alluded to, and so, you know, my request would be, is that, you know, every effort is made to get a permit application completed by the end of the year, and would also ask respectfully, Mr. Chair, if that doesn't happen, that we can have them back in January for an update.
I'm sure you'd be happy to come back for periodic in January, wouldn't you councillor?
Be happy to be here.
Yeah, just if we don't hit that deadline, I really would like to understand why and what the remediation process is to get us on track, because it has been too long, and, you know, nine months construction still puts us in a place where, you know, when the Fourth of July comes along, if you're sitting at the review stand, you're, you're looking at, you know, a construction site at best, and it has been too long, and it's something that I do think we want to see some progress on. So again, not going to comment on rehab versus whatever, like I said, that's beyond my, my expertise and knowledge, but what I do know is that the timing has, has taken a long time, and if we can't meet those timing deadlines, we can't meet that goal of getting a permit pulled by the end of the year, I would like to make sure that we have another touchpoint early in January to understand why. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other comments from councillors or questions? Councillor. Counselor Butler.
I guess the only thing I would say to the ownership as well is, like, you know, you don't get a gold star for self-financing now because you've only had 13 years to, like, borrow at low rates. I think what is frustrating is the notion that, I'm very concerned, I don't think we're going to get this. I don't think this is ever going to get there. So I guess that's where I have my doubts as to the project. I mean, I think the builder and the architect are fine, and Attorney McGrell's doing right by his client. You behave badly. And the family ownership structure has done such that, like, it's just not been, it has not been a win for our town for having you as a property owner for the last 13 years. So, yeah, do I wish that somebody had bid $975? Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I just, I understand, I think Counselor Chines, you know, asking by the end of the year, you guys move along, because I think this was at our last meeting. Brian was here on another issue, and we're like, hey, can you bring back in the Main Street development? Because we've got some follow-up questions. I think it's kind of been bad neighborship, and I don't know how we keep on waiting for it to be better, but like, that vinyl sign for two years has sat there, and it's an embarrassment. And when we talked about it, Brian, we talked about a big screen like they had at the State House, that they've done at other developments that kind of hit it and said, you know, coming soon, like advertisement for you guys, like, you put a banner up that we carry in the Fourth of July parade, and it's just, it's been two years, and now it's going to be a third year in July, because July's going to come really quickly. And that's not, you know, it is the center of our town, and Counselor Dabrowski is right, there's a lot of other projects. Again, I'm an attorney, I'm not a construction person, but we're going to start construction across the street at the middle school and solar panels, and like, we're getting things done in our town, and it's really disappointing. I'm not where Counselor Butler is yet, that I'm really hopeful, I'm an optimist at heart, I'm hopeful we get there, but, you know, it's been months and months and months, and it's, every time we drive by there, it's just a reminder of, you guys are not, you're not doing your part of the bargain of being in our town and being residents of our town and business owners in our town.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vincent, did you have a question, comment?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. I'm not a public relations expert, but I would suggest you might want to be a little bit more proactive in providing input to us on a regular basis about how the project is progressing, rather than just having to come before us every few months and have a Q and A session. Like, it would have been nice to have been able to look at the slide presentation in advance of tonight's meeting, but I think just giving us a regular update in writing on what's going on, that we can read that, and then if we decide as a body that we want to have you come back in and ask you questions face-to-face, we can do that. But I think that would help you from a public relation, at least with this town council, would help you with the public relations if you were a little bit more proactive in providing us updates. Thank you.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you. And to expand on that, I also think there's another audience here, which is the public as a whole. And so I would actually take Counselor Vincent's idea and suggest you have a website that provides information to the community on kind of on-demand in terms of where the progress project is, what you're expecting to do. I mean, this is a significant site, it is in the center of town. There is a lot of frustration in town, I think, as you've kind of gathered from the comments about this. And so I would ask not only that that communication comes to us, but that there is an effort made, again, whether it's a project website or some other mechanism, so that the general public can really get a sense of what's going on. And you may hear them express some concerns about the timeline as well, but I think that concern is well-seeded and it's well-intentioned, and I hope that the public expectations around what we see in terms of getting something done ultimately are met.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Butler.
Just one other question. Talk to me about the notion of going with sort of six small shops as the commercial versus two larger, just doing them as two. Granted, you can combine them, but I guess from the town's standpoint in terms of a benefit like that that's replacing what, you know, it had passed its time by the time I ate there. But what was once a spectacular and sort of centerpiece restaurant for the town, if we're going to end up with, you know, two barber shops, three massage parbers, and like a key maker, maybe that isn't the best thing for us. So I guess I'm probably a little more concerned around the notion of zoning it for, zoning it for so multiple small locations versus a couple of big items. But I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if that can even, you know, I don't know zoning for anything, so.
It can, yeah. Just really use versus dividing the space. So we just, we just kind of did as a placeholder six, because we thought they fit. But what can go in there is any combination of retail, service establishment, or restaurant. So any combination of those. So, you know, we might have a restaurant, for example, that wants to take up, you know, three of those spaces, so they would be combined into one. So you would, you know, it's kind of flex space. What we put as six is that's a maximum, and it's kind of placeholders.
Okay. What was the, it was Moleese, but what was the other section before?
It was a barber shop, I remember, a yogurt shop.
Yeah.
Gym in there, one small gym at one point.
I'm a newcomer, only here like 20 years, so.
Yeah. And, you know, as we move forward, I'll make sure that Andreas is connected with Erin Kerkindup from the Economic Development to try to find some quality tenants that will be able to go in there. She's always helpful.
Anything else from the council? I guess I'd just conclude by saying that that's what we want to see, and we want to see it sooner as opposed to later. What's been done with the building so far has been ineffective. It's putting lipstick on a pig. So I learned a couple of things in law school. Don't overstate your case, make your point, sit down. So I'm not going to take a lot of time here. And I know what a great attorney you are, I really do, but we've got nine smart people up here, we've got a pile of attorneys up here. Please don't make us get creative, because we like to get things done in this town. And nothing is happening with this building so far. So we're going to keep you on a short leash, and we really want you to come back in here and show us actual progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Six B is flag request, vote expected. Just want to point out that this is not a change to our policy, it's an annual flag request, and I believe that it having been made by Counselor Vincent, probably appropriate for me to turn this over to him.
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Sherry, can you pull up the slides for me? Do you have them?
Yeah.
I sent you all my information a few days ago. This is a flag raising request back on April 8th of this year. The town council approved a request to fly certain flags at the second flag pole at the Americal Civic Center, but that expires at the end of this year. So my request in the package of November 18th, can you go to the second slide, please? Thank you, is to request to fly flags on the second flag pole at the Americal Civic Center throughout 2025. I'll note that the main flag pole, in accordance with our flag policy, will continue to only fly the United States and the POW/MIA flag. I'm talking about the second flag pole only. These, under our current town council flag policy, these are the only four flags that are being flown. And so since the flags that we flew at the Americal Civic Center this past year, that being the Americal Division flag, the Pride flag, and the Juneteenth flag are not covered under the flag policy, in order to fly those on the second flag pole, somebody, anybody can, I happen to be the one that's doing it, but anybody in Wakefield could, has to submit a flag raising request in order to fly those flags in any period of time on that second flag pole. I will also note, if you can go to the last slide, please, you guys already had a chance to see my reasons why we should fly the Americal Division on certain dates, the Pride flag on certain dates, and the Juneteenth flag on certain dates. But if you can go to the last slide, Sherry, thanks. I'll note that if my request is granted, then in calendar year 2025, the Americal Division flag will fly 337 days, which is 92% of the year. The Pride flag will fly on 21 days in June, and the Juneteenth flag will fly on seven days. I invited the chair of the HRC and the Veterans Advisory Board to come tonight, if you guys can come to the table. I'll stop talking because what they have to say to you tonight has much more meaning than anything I can provide to you. So whatever, if you guys can introduce yourselves and your address, whatever ward are you want to go in, I'd appreciate it.
Hi. Thank you so much. I'm reading my letter from my phone, apologies. My name is Jessica Sodich, I'm the chair of the HRC, and I'm at 33 Myrtle Ave in Wakefield. I'm just going to read this out. Apologies, I'm not off-book. Dear Wakefield Town Councilors, as the chair of the WHRC, I'm writing in support of Bob Vincent's request to fly the Pride flag and Juneteenth flag in addition to the Americal Division flag on the second flag pole located at the Americal Civic Center in 2025. The schedule that he has proposed is agreeable as well. We are bolstered by Wakefield's continued show of support as a safe and welcoming community to groups that often feel vulnerable. Granting this request in the upcoming year will also allow us to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Army's birthday on June 14th and the 160th anniversary of Juneteenth on June 19th. These events are significant and meaningful ways to build bridges in our town, and we appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Paul Cancellery, 71 Myrtle Avenue, and I currently serve as the chair of the Veterans Advisory Board. Greetings, Counselor, Chair McLean, and members of the Wakefield Town Council. This evening, I'm acknowledging as the chair of the Veterans Advisory Board awareness of a flag request to be flown at the Americal Civic Center in accordance with the Wakefield Town Council's policy and the use of flag poles on town property, specifically the second flag pole at the Americal Civic Center. The Veterans Advisory Board expresses gratitude to Counselor Vincent for donating to the town of Wakefield the Americal Division colors. The Veterans Advisory Board expresses support for the request, seeking the town council to permit, one, flying the Americal Division colors at the Americal Civic Center from January 1, 2025, through June 1, June 14, and July 1 through December 31 of 2025. The members of the Veterans Advisory Board have supported and will continue to express support for flying of both the Pride flag and the Juneteenth flags in accordance with Mr. Vincent's flag request dated November 18, 2024. Two, the Pride flag from June 2 through June 13, and June 15 through June 18, and June 26 through June 30. And, three, the Juneteenth flag from June 19 through June 25, commemorating June 19 in 1865, when Union Major General Gordon Granger read General Order Number Three to the people of Gallatin, Texas. It states in part, quote, "The people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." End quote. The Veterans Advisory Board upholds that the flag of the United States and the POW and the MIA flag are flown with prominence on their own flag pole in accordance with all applicable state and federal laws, as outlined in the town of Wakefield's current flag policy dated April 8, 2024. The Veterans Advisory Board recommends favorable action for this request. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening on this matter.
Thank you very much.
One clarification I wanted to make is the reason that the June 1 and June 2, June 1 is a Sunday.
Yeah, we always.
And you're not having your event until June 2.
Yeah, we always do it on the first Monday to work together with the town, who are the people who are helping us to put it up.
I want to sincerely thank both of you for coming tonight and for taking the time to write these letters of support. I'm very humbled that you two have come here this evening and provided this message to us and to the town. So I sincerely thank you.
I thank you for submitting the request. It was really nice, and I appreciate from several of you who spoke last year, it's, they're nice events, and I appreciate all that you all do.
Thank you. Questions, comments from any counselors? Counselor Carney?
Yes. It's Cavalry, there was a vote by the Veterans Advisory Committee on which you just read this evening, they voted this?
They are aware, there is no vote on the policy that the town council has put together.
Was there a vote on the letter you just presented on their behalf?
There was no vote on the letter.
So you are not, you're not speaking for the Veterans Advisory?
No, I'm speaking on their awareness of the issue.
I think it's important to say. I think it's important to say that the first time you and I ever talked was Julie Scott had you call me, and we had a discussion on the phone. And at that point in time, you advised me that there are members of the Veterans Advisory Committee who were afraid of getting reappointed. And I repeated that a number of times in front of them at a meeting. I put a letter and the item stating the same thing, and not once has anyone challenged me on that. And I think that, I think if they felt that way, they would, they would challenge me. So I don't understand how you can come up here as representing them, read a statement like that, and not put it to a vote, because the meeting I had with you, the Blue Star wife at that meeting said they don't want to take a vote. So that's where I leave it, you and, I'm sorry, Ms., I have hearing aids, I couldn't hear what your name is.
It's okay, it's Jessica Sodich.
Jessica. I only have one issue with the Human Rights Commission. I thought you did a great job with the celebration last year on Martin Luther King, MLT Day. But if anyone looks at that video, the flag, the American flag was stashed on the far-left hand of that stage, and you didn't salute the flag. That was not part of your celebration. And I would hope in the future, this is not a scolding for me, I have no right to scold, I just am a representative here, I'm just like you, a citizen. But I was very, very disturbed at the fact that we had a town event paid for by the town of Wakefield, and it was not the courtesy to salute the American flag. And the American flag, if you look at the video, I mean, it's a great video, it was a great celebration, I enjoyed it. Look at the video, the flag is stashed to the far-left of the stage, and that upset me. I have nothing further to say, Ms. Chairman.
I.
Sorry, you can.
It's okay, I, it's always good to hear when people have seen something and they want a change to be made. As you all know, we are, we're a group of volunteers who I don't, we worked with the school to set up the stage. It's not as though, believe me, any of us went up there stashing American flags. So I don't really, I can look at the video and see, and then the next year we can do it a little bit differently, you know?
Thank you.
Counselor Dabrowski?
It'll likely come as no surprise that I'm not going to be supportive of the request, and it's not because of the flags that we're talking about here tonight. I have a deep connection to the Pride flag, and I have a, nothing but admiration for anything related to our military or our veterans. Similarly, I have tremendous respect for all that Juneteenth represents. So from my perspective, those are all, and I've described it before, as low-hanging fruit. Those are the easy ones that I think all of us can agree, or I think most of us can agree, perhaps not universally. So I fully support what each of those flags represents. What I don't support is the flag policy that was adopted back in April, and I made my position clear at the time, it's not changed, I'm not going to repeat all the arguments, but suffice it to say that when you think about it, that flag policy now, and this request now, actually has the unintended consequence of being a discriminatory policy. And that's because this council has opted to fashion it in such a way that there is very limited opportunity for any flags to fly except for the Pride flag, Juneteenth flag, and the Americal. flag, and the Americal flag. And that's not right. And the biggest issue that I've had since the shortly decision came down from the Supreme Court is, I don't think our town should be in the business of calling balls and strikes. I don't think the seven of us should decide what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. As I said, I fully support the Pride flag, I fully support the Juneteenth flag, I fully support the Americal flag. Those aren't the only flags I support, and there are plenty of other flags that I would not support. But I don't think that I should be in the position of deciding what flags do fly and what flags do not. But we, this, this council has deliberately created a policy that boxes it in to provide for only certain of the flags to be recognized, and that doesn't feel right to me. And so I, whenever I've been faced with the decision of having to vote on approval of a flag, I have historically voted no, because I believe we should follow the guidance of a town like Redding and fly the American flag and the POW, MIA, MIA, period. There, as you rightly point out, there are so many ways in which we can celebrate important events in our community. The MLK event, I think, is one of the premier events of the year, and that doesn't involve raising an MLK flag. The Pride celebration is a wonderful opportunity for us to come together as a community, something that like my partner who grew up here didn't even have the chance to do, you know, as a student through the Wakefield Public Schools, because that would be that got heard of, you know? So in his own community, where he was born, raised from age four all the way through. It's a meaningful thing, but it's the ceremony. It's the flag, it's not the flag. So I think people have become so hung up on the idea that it's only, it's because of the flag that we have given it meaning. I can tell you, as someone who appreciates what the flag, what the Pride flag specifically means, it's not about the flag. It's about the celebration, it's about the coming together, it's about the feeling of being welcomed, it's about the feeling of being supported. There's a lot of, there's a lot of different aspects to it. And there are plenty of other people who probably feel equally passionate about any whole host of issues, be it wars abroad, be it some of the cultural issues we're facing, be it abortion. I mean, there are just too many. And so this notion that we're only going to focus on the Pride flag, the Americal flag, and the Juneteenth flag, I think puts this council in the exact position of calling the balls and strikes in a way that I don't think any council should. And I was outvoted, you know, from the get-go in this policy, it doesn't change my conviction on this. I am steadfast in my belief that we can all universally have the American flag and the POW/MIA flag, and then anything else we want to do to commemorate, educate, or celebrate, all of these other really important aspects to our, to our community, there's umpteen ways to do it. But understand that by getting your request granted, or this request of Counselor Vincent, there are a lot of other folks out there who would like to see their own flags flown, be it maybe someone who's anti-abortion, or pro-reproductive rights, or pro-Israel, or pro-Palestine, or whatever the case, any number of things, you know, that they don't have that opportunity. And that seems like not quite right, right? Especially when we're talking about this is meant to be an opportunity for our community to be able to celebrate our openness and acceptance. So I just kind of put that out there, because in thinking about it, again, I don't believe for a second anyone had that, that purpose, but that's the unintended consequence, I think, of the policy as it's crafted. So I don't support the policy, and this is not at all a reflection on either of the flags that you so eloquently both spoke about. And again, I strongly support both of the causes that you're referring to, but I don't think that this flag policy is appropriate. So I'm going to vote against it, but it's not because I don't support the flags.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. I respect your comments, Counselor Dabrowski, but that's exactly why this is a flag-raising request and not a change to the flag policy. I will concur that if it was a change to the flag policy, and the flag policy, like it says for the American POW/MIA, General Galvin's flag, and the Marine Corps flag at Langley Field, if there was a policy change that said these are the only three flags that can permanently fly at the Americal Civic Center, then that would be difficult for somebody to want to fly a different flag, because they'd have to get the council to change the policy. But by submitting this as a flag-raising request, if somebody came in in August of next year and they wanted to fly a flag for a particular reason, then this council could vote to amend my flag-raising request, not having to change the policy. There's a huge difference between using the word "policy" and "flag-raising request", and could change my flag-raising request to fly that other flag. The other reason I'm not submitting a flag-raising request is because I'm still a firm believer that we should have a second flag pole at Town Hall, and that Town Hall would be where commemorative flags could be flown, and the Americal Division flag could fly every day at some point in time in the future at the Americal Civic Center. So by having additional flag poles at the center of our town, at Town Hall, we would have that flexibility of flying commemorative flags. But I do strongly believe that the Americal Division flag should fly in front of the Americal Civic Center for ninety-two percent of the year, and that the Pride and Juneteenth flag, for the reasons I'm not going to articulate again, I provide all of you my input in advance so you can read through it, you understand my reasons for flying the Juneteenth flag and my reasons for flying the Pride flag. And the one thing I'll mention about the Juneteenth flag is it is the one hundred and sixtieth anniversary of Juneteenth this year. We are commemorating and rededicating our Soldiers and Sailors Memorial this year, and I did some research recently and found that, I can't pinpoint that a Wakefield soldier was in Galveston, Texas on June nineteenth of eighteen sixty-five. But I can tell you that Edward Jamison with the Fourth Massachusetts Volunteer Light Artillery was in Galveston on June fifth, eighteen sixty-five, as part of carrying out the general order that you mentioned in your letter, Paul. So I think there's a significant tie between Juneteenth, a federally-recognized holiday, the one hundred and sixtieth anniversary of Juneteenth, we're rededicating our Civil War Memorial in, on May thirty-first of next year, and we can show that we had a Wakefield resident in eighteen sixty-five in Galveston, Texas to help carry that, out that order that was, that was put in on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. So once again, this is a flag-raising request that can easily be modified if need be by the council, is not a change to the flag policy. That's all I have, Chairman McLean.
If I could just respond to that?
Sure. Start with Counselor Dabrowski.
So with that, we, you mentioned that other requests can be made. Every other request but the Pride flag and the Juneteenth flag have been denied by this council.
No, the Americal Division flag was approved last April eighth.
But I'm saying, and, all right, accepting the Americal Division flag, which is part of the policy that you're just trying to, I mean, part of the request you're just renewing. Correct. There was a Christian flag that was requested. Christmas is a federally-recognized holiday. Would putting up a Christian flag be appropriate? Columbus Day is how it's identified by the federal government. It's a federally-recognized holiday. Would flying the Christopher Columbus flag, or I think it's El Capitano, or whatever it's called, is that appropriate? You can see what I'm saying. So we end up at a very slippery slope here, and I'm not promoting that either of those flags should or should not be flown, but you can understand that who is it that is the arbiter of what's appropriate and what's not? We are predominantly Christian in this community, but we are not exclusively Christian in this community. So by flying a Christian flag, what message are we sending? Are we recognizing the majority of our population, or are we marginalizing the minority of our population? So there's a lot of these issues that come up when you have these flag policies and these requests, and that's why, with all due respect to what Counselor Vincent is saying, it, I think it's an oversimplified approach to say, "I'm just making a request, and it's the same request that we had last year." It goes beyond that, and I'm not asking either of you to comment on it purely, it's more just for everyone watching and everyone here at this table. It's a bigger issue, and I think you're seeing it, you're seeing what I'm referring to here. That's why I'm taking the position that I have relative to these flags, and again, it's not because I don't support Juneteenth and all that it represents, or Pride Month and all that it represents, or the Americal and all that it represents. It's not that at all, but it's the, it's the bigger context that I think is being lost here by focusing on the easier stuff. Thank you.
Counselor Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so we've been talking about flags for a long time on this council, I think for most of my five years here, and other than the three flags that are contemplated in Counselor Vincent's request, I believe we've had three, maybe four, other flag requests that Counselor Dabrowski has rightly pointed out, all of which were denied, but I want to point out they were all denied unanimously by the council. And so, you know, as we talk about a slippery slope, which is a logical fallacy anyway in most arguments, I'm not really that concerned about the slippery slope, because I don't think we've had as a council all that much difficulty calling those balls and strikes as they were. And I don't think we're going to change any minds on this council in terms of this request. So, you know, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve Counselor Vincent's flag request as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor, but any discussions on, further discussion on the motion? Counselor Carney?
Yeah, I just want to let you know that there is no such thing, and the two veterans who are in this room will have to agree with me, there's no such thing as an Americal Division flag. There isn't. You know, Counselor didn't, hadn't made one up, having known people in the Americal Division, and been on the board of selectmen who got the armory, who named the armory, who saved the armory. You know, I take this very, very personally, it has nothing to do with the Americal Civic Center. The Americal Civic Center was a place during COVID, you could sneak a flag up. We now have a representative of the Human Rights Commission and the Chairman of the Town's Veteran Committee here, but he doesn't represent them. He just admitted the fact that he didn't get a vote from his committee, so we accept that as a recommendation from him. I ask you, Ms. Cavallari, you are also the Veterans Agent of the Town of Sockers.
That's correct.
Do they have a policy of this? Do they put the gay Pride flag up?
No, they don't.
They don't? Okay. So you're here as a person, because you're here supporting Counselor Vincent, and you want this to happen for the benefit of Counselor Vincent, but you didn't even, you didn't even consult with your own committee?
The Veterans Advisory Board is aware of Counselor Vincent's request.
But did they vote on it?
We meet tomorrow night. It is not required by the Veterans Advisory Board to vote on it, because it's a decision that the Town Council is making.
Oh, I think you did wrongly. See, you're the advisory people, both of you represent something, you're supposed to be advising us. We shouldn't be going to a meeting, and in the meeting before I showed up, you had three Counselors at your meeting, and quite frankly, those three Counselors said that if you went to town meeting, you couldn't pass an article that would be official, didn't they? Okay? Then I came there and said, "No, I know for a fact you can't." So we're talking, we're talking in all sorts of directions here, but you have not, you didn't come here tonight with a vote of your committee. And I know it's not going to change the vote here, I know it's not going to change the vote, but the Americal flag doesn't exist. You put that up to give people the impression that you're going to make people happy because you're celebrating the Americal Division. I knew people on the Americal Division, and not that they'd mind this, but this is kind of, this is kind of clouding the whole issue. I suggested during my campaign that they put the gay rights flag down on the bandstand as a binding thing, that's what most people in Wakefield would see it. But it should not be in the line of sight when I'm saluting the flag and I'm telling these two veterans, "That's wrong."
By the way, point of order, Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Shouldn't he have been talking about the motion, whether or not we were going to move this vote?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It does seem real, we're getting a little bit away from the actual motion.
I would like an opportunity to respond, please.
I think you've earned that.
Okay, because I've come prepared for this. Okay. In February of twenty sixteen, the Americal Division Veterans Association provided an Americal Division flag to the town of Wakefield. It was in the Town Administrator's Office. That's the indoor flag that's going to be unveiled on December sixth at the Americal Civic Center. On April twelfth, twenty twenty-four, members of the Massachusetts First Battalion, one hundred and eighty-second Infantry Division Regiment, which was assigned to the Americal Division when it was established in nineteen forty-two, attended the flag-raising ceremony for the Americal Division flag at the Americal Civic Center. They didn't tell me that that was an illegal flag, they actually gave me a commemorative pin to thank, a coin to thank me for doing this. In Rockland Island Arsenal, which is an active U.S. Army installation, going back to twenty twenty-one, they currently fly the Americal Division flag at the National Cemetery Association located on the installation. And I will point out to you, Counselor Carney, that at the spring town meeting, on the floor, you amended your proposed bylaw, on the floor of the town meeting, in order to fly the Americal Division flag year-round on the second flag pole at the Americal Civic Center. I know, because I got up and spoke against that. So you, at town meeting, wanted to take the Americal Division flag and fly it all year, and at no time then did you say it wasn't a real flag, but now today you're saying that it is. The second thing, as far as voting, I want to let you know that I have included the Veterans Advisory Board on every step of this process, when I procured the Americal Division flag, when I donated the Americal Division flag, when the Town Council passed my request on April eighth of last year. On April twelfth, members of the Veterans Advisory Board came to the flag-raising ceremony on April twelfth. I've worked with the VAB and the Veteran Service Officer on getting that indoor Americal Division flag, the one that was provided to the town in twenty sixteen, framed and put on display inside the Americal Civic Center, and the Veterans Advisory Board members and the Veteran Service Officers planned to attend that ceremony on December sixth. I've worked extensively with the Veterans Advisory Board on Rededication Day that we're doing next May. And the last thing I'll note is I know that you went and briefed the Veterans Advisory Board when you were running for office about your proposed bylaw, but I read the meeting minutes, and you know what you did not do? You did not ask them to vote on your flag bylaw. So I find it incredible that you had a profound change to the town's bylaws, and you didn't ask the Veterans Advisory Board whether they should vote in supporting your bylaw change, but you come to me on a flag-raising request, a much lower threshold than a profound change to the town bylaws, and you say I should have gotten a vote from the Veterans Advisory Board before I submitted a flag-raising request, and nowhere in our flag policy does it say I have to get the approval of anyone except for the Town Council. That's all I have.
We have a motion seconded. All those in favor?
This is in terms of ending discussion?
No, the, well, the motion was to approve the.
Well, because I want to chime in, I mean, I feel like.
Oh, all right then, I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought you were trying to get me to get to a vote here.
No, no, I was, I was just, I was just like, once we got off the rails there.
No, the motion was on the request, we haven't made a motion to move the question yet.
Okay, hold on.
Do you want to talk about the motion?
Yes.
Then go ahead.
But he was saying it was the motion to close debate, it was not, the motion was on the request, so that, if the Chair permits it.
But if you have one more, if you have one more comment, I'm not trying to cut anybody off here.
Again, I think we are the body who should make the decisions, like that's frankly what we're hired to do, and, or hired, in quotes. I do think it's the job of this council to decide like this, decide flag policy in general, and then we can make, you know, we do get to call the balls and strikes. I would make the argument, again, like we're talking about this slippery slope, let's not kid ourselves, the first slippery slope on this whole flag debate, and I know it's going to be wildly unpopular, and I'm going to get grief about this, like, we should have the American flag up, it's just the POW and MIA flag has been around for, I don't know, forty or fifty years, but that's no different than any other sort of special interest flag. Don't roll your eyes at me, it is the same thing, or it's not, it's not dramatically different other than bylaws. That's your first slippery slope, is you're willing to fly that flag. From there, all bets are off in terms of what flags we want to fly. I actually, I mean, look, I am voting in favor of the request. I would frankly make the request that would be our flag policy, is Americal, Pride, and Juneteenth, and be done with it. I frankly, like, as both Counselor Carney and I ran on flag policy, I ran on not wanting to like get the town bogged down in flag policy, so I'd like us not to get bogged down. I'm in favor of the request, I'm in favor of the request becoming permanent. So that's sort of all I have to say on this.
Does that end up again, Counselor Dabrowski?
But Counselor Butler, you began your remarks by saying that we were hired to make these calls and call the balls and strikes, but then you ended your comments by saying that you want to make a policy that restricts it to only these three identified flags. So isn't that completely inconsistent?
No, I want to make the, I, no, I want to, I want to, boom, we're done, we're never talking about flags again, these are our three, until we get somebody who does a policy. Like, so I am fine with saying, like, instead of having people come before us, just say, like, this is the deal, this is what we're doing.
But there is a policy that was established by.
Right, right. And an unpopular one with you, and an unpopular one with Mr. Carney. And an unpopular one with you, and an unpopular one with Mr. Carney, probably an unpopular one with everybody here. But it works.
I do have a point of information.
Yes, sir.
The Americal Division, what the town council ought to know is that the Massachusetts Army National Guard, the 1A2 Infantry, is affiliated with the Americal Division.
I believe I have a neighbor serving right now.
Their headquarters is in Melrose at the Armory.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to note, the POW/MIA flag actually does stand on a different legal footing.
Exactly.
Than these other flags. Because there is a.
Oh, right. But it is a new.
There is a state statute requiring us to fly it.
I know, we're required to fly it. I'm saying that, I'm just saying in general, the philosophical discussion of, we are all part of the United States of America. The POW/MIA flag was a construct, as are these other flags. I mean, granted, so is the American one, but that's beside, that's one we don't have a choice on.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay, we have a motion seconded for whether we are going to accept Counselor Vincent's motions as provided. All those in favor? All opposed? Chair, the motion passes five to two. Thank you both very much for coming.
Thank you very much. Chair, can I just say, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I just want to thank you both. You are both volunteers in our town. You just sat here for an hour and 15 minutes on something that was a vote we took. And I just want to thank you for all you do, the veteran, the ceremonies that you put on, the programings that you put on. There will always be feedback. You are open to hearing that feedback. I hope that feedback goes to Town Administrator Mayo, who looks over all the committees and boards that we have. But I just want to thank you because it is a thankless, as much as our job is thankless, your jobs are thankless. So, thank you so much for all that you do.
Yeah, thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good remainder of the evening. Item 5C, the intermunicipal agreement, this is really just for the council to begin digesting. We had a vote, I think it was the one meeting I missed, Town Administrator, where the Zoom event or the.
I didn't think you missed any meetings.
The Boom Event? I missed, I think I missed the Zoom Bomb or whatever the heck it was. And I think it was at that meeting that 15,000 was appropriated. I think at that time, if you look at the minutes, it was for a consultant to help us with the SHI list, which seemed like a very good idea at the time.
Meeting of what?
Oh, the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, thank you.
Affordable Housing Trust, sorry. Too many committees, too many nights out. And we did vote to provide $15,000 for the consultant. What I didn't realize until recently, because I asked Samantha Elliott, you know, what's going on with that? She said, well, Town of Redding has to vote, and this is going to be an intermunicipal situation. So, now we have an intermunicipal agreement proposed that's got all of us putting in that 15,000 per year. I wanted to be sure that we had a chance to look it over. I think I would like it to be, we have a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust again in December.
December 11th.
December 11th, and would like to have it back on that agenda so we can now look at what we currently have, which is a, to me, it's a little bit broader. It's a little bit more complicated than us just going to this MRHNSO. I'm going to get the letters wrong, Steve, but that's what I thought. We're contracting for 15,000 to get help from this one subcontract. But now it's an intermunicipal agreement, which is a little more complicated to me. Want to make sure that we get a copy of what underlies that agreement, which would be the consultant's agreement, I believe. And there's also a lot of communities involved. And I also have questions about the future funding of this. You know, we ponied up, if you will, from the AHT for year one. That doesn't mean that the Affordable Housing Trust, in my opinion, would of necessity be funding the subsidized housing inventory needs of the entire town. But it's a good start, possibly, assuming we get our hours out of that. You're going to look at the other communities involved and read the provisions about how they're going to account to us for their hours. I want to make sure there's no additional billing in there. I think Town Administrator doesn't think there is additional over the 15,000. I think I tend to agree after a second reading, Steve. But wanted to have everybody have it, see what it is. We'll go back to the Affordable Housing Trust, we'll work it again, we'll get more information and possibly bring it back here.
We may want to tighten up a little bit the line.
Yeah.
In my third reading.
Yeah.
Feel like I'm in District Court, right?
Well, I haven't done my fourth reading yet, but we'll get together eventually. But wanted you all to know about it because we would like to go back to the Affordable Housing Trust, talk about a couple of these issues, and bring it back to the town council, either for further discussion or information, or possibly at some point for a vote, if it's actually determined that, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust and Town Administrator and myself as representative to that trust, if we think that it's a good time to have this body consider whether we actually sign the document. Questions? Counselor Butler's got the puzzled look, and I want to make sure.
I mean, I guess, have we, we've determined who the consultant is, right?
Yeah, it is a group of letters that I'm not terribly familiar with, but they have a website from the minutes of, and I say, I think it is the one meeting I missed, from the minutes of July 29th, 2024, trying to find that $15,000 sum. It was going to be, Ms. Elliott clarified that the HPP would be the plan that consults with the MNRHSO. Ms. Fowler asked how much money was needed for membership. Ms. Elliott responded 15,000. Ms. Hickey said it would be great to try out the program without impacting the town budget before committing a budget line item to it. Ms. Hickey made a motion to approve using trust funds to pay 15,000 fee for membership in the MNRHSO for a period of one year. Motion carried six zero. What I understand that group to do is they, you know, for example, recently, we noticed that there was a building missing from our SHI. This is a company that helps you maintain that list, helps make sure that properties that are perhaps going on for sale are brought to your attention. It's things we already do.
Foreclosures as well, which sometimes we don't get notice on.
It gives us another layer of assistance in trying to get every property we can on that list and keep every property we can on that list.
So, is it just the seven of us that are with the, forming this MNRHSO or?
The seven communities.
The seven communities are forming the intermunicipal agreement group there, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
But I assume this.
It's a regional group.
I assume this group does for like, you know, probably 100 communities or something like that. Like, they probably have the data for every community here.
I think they would.
Yeah, and, you know.
So, by us getting together, we're going to get a little bit of a better bang for the buck, basically.
We hope. And it also, they also indicate that they'll give us a, you know, a quarterly accounting, I believe it is, of our, the hours that were spent of working for us, if you will. You know, communities can trade hours if somebody else needs more hours than we do. I'm not convinced of this long-term, Counselor Butler, honestly.
Okay, yeah.
This was a single year, 15,000. I don't know that I would want, personally, want the Affordable Housing Trust to take that on long-term, given its lack of, you know, its limited nature of funding and limited replenishment of that fund currently. So, it's something I want everybody to think about, and it's something I want to do more research on. I do think I missed that meeting though, Steve. Who was there, six zero?
I don't know. I was too busy.
Well, if you missed it, then it was six zero.
Yeah, he had to deal with the Zoom Bomber that night. So, he was busy. He doesn't know if I was there or not.
You might have ended with Zoom Bomber, maybe.
Nope, nope, I'm not listed. I'm not listed. It was Gail Severt, Sarah Fowler, Harold Mateo, Matt Lowry, William Boudry, Maureen Hickey, and Paula Thompson. I think we lost one during the Zoom Bomber.
You did.
So, anyway, it's just something for the council to consider. We may be coming back with it pending. So, I didn't want to spend extra time on it, just wanted everybody, it's really more of an awareness thing to get us all introduced to it. Item six, we have licenses. Can we move to that? Everybody good? We have Class A, we have for A, a Class II license application, AK Motors LLC 349 Water Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Michael McCarthy with offices at One Center Street, representing the applicant. With me is Frank Taby, the owner of the property, the principal of Woodville LLC, which owns the property. I think joining us on Zoom, hopefully, is Ruslan Arkiev and Nadia Nurzat. They're husband and wife. They're the principals of AK Motors LLC. We're here before you requesting a Class II auto sales license to 349 Water Street. 349 Water Street, well, to kind of set the context and frame the issues, there are basically two issues, whether the site is appropriate for the principal business as proposed, and whether the applicants are suitable candidates for such a license. I've submitted, together with the application, actually, I submitted on Friday, resumes or CVs for Ruslan and Nadia. You can see if you've received the CVs, that they're very qualified people. Ruslan is a Fulbright scholar with a Master's of Science in International Economics. He is involved with KG Motors and Newton, so he has experience in this field, as does Nadia. He's also a representative of Kurdistan before the World Bank, so he's a diplomat, he's a foreign diplomat, and he represents this country at the World Bank. Both are legal residents of the United States. They have copies of passports, they have copies of their licenses, if the board would like to see it. Nadia has a degree in economics. She is the sales manager, the principal at KG Motors LLC, and has some experience in construction, in construction industry as well. So, they're well-educated, they're contributing, legal residents of the United States, they have experience in the auto sales business. Nadia will be the principal, will be the manager of 349 Water Street. She will be there, that will be her full-time job. She'll be on-site, she'll be responsible. Ruslan will be there from the summer forward, but for the time being, it will be Nadia, and then it will be both of them. I didn't mention that the husband and wife, that they're in this joint venture together. With respect to the property, the history of the, first of all, the property's in the business district. The history of the property is that it was once the home of Woodville Motors, who we all know kind of historically was hoagie down there. So, that was, that was an auto mechanic's yard for a long, long time. It passed that, when Frank acquired it, became the home of Planet Aid, which was like a drop-off for clothing donations. Then it became the home of another Class II licensee, which is kind of fairly, fairly recent. As a part of that, we went to the ZBA for the current layout of the site, I should say, that nothing is proposed to change, except one thing, which I'll get to. But the site, as it was approved by this board previously for a Class II license, and as it was approved by the zoning board of appeals, won't change. The use won't change, the layout won't change, it'll be exactly as was originally proposed and approved. So, I would suggest to you that the site is suitable for its proposed use. The one caveat is, when I was originally here, I represented the last applicant for a Class II license, and there was some discussion with Counselor Dobrowski and relative to the site, and some landscaping features where a commitment was made, and not followed through on, not through lack of effort on the part of Mr. Taby or myself. But that was the first item I raised when the new client came in to let them know that there was a history, there was an unfulfilled commitment, not for the verification of the board members who may not have been part of that, the council at the time, and whoever may be watching at home. That related to a request that was agreed upon for some landscaping features along 349 Water Street, just to kind of break the visual plane and add a little color perhaps. So, that was part of the discussion I had with the current client, who has no problem at all fulfilling that commitment that was made previously by another party. Also had the discussion with Mr. Taby, and he informs me that he, like I, were talking to that prior licensee about fulfilling that commitment. And Mr. Taby will tell you tonight that, first of all, my client agrees to that and is happy to discuss details. But Mr. Taby also agrees to it. So, if it's not followed through by the licensee, assuming the license gets approved, that'll be followed through by Mr. Taby, to make sure that gets done. So, addressing that point, you know, I think I've kind of touched the bases that I need to touch, I don't want to take too much of your time. But, you know, I would submit to you that the applicant, they're qualified people, they have experience in the auto business, Nadia will be the full-time manager at the site, and that the property actually is suitable, it being a business-owned parcel that has been used and approved for this use by this council previously, and with the history of auto mechanic repair and whatnot. So, with that, you know, that would conclude my opening remarks.
And Counselor, did you expect the clients to be brought over?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chair, do you have anybody?
Yes, I do. They're online, but they declined to be brought over.
Are you searching your memory banks, Counselor?
Oh, I remember well.
Okay. Memory, it's a steel trap.
Frank, how are you?
Good.
He should be with us now. He's just, doesn't have his audio on or his camera.
And is just going to be sales or repair as well?
It's just going to be sales. There may be some work to get the cars ready, but it's not going to be a repair show overall. It's actually conditioned in the board of appeals decision that it not be an act of auto repair. Is he on, Chair?
Yes, he is. Can you see him?
No.
Yep. WCAT, can you get us on the screen, please?
Oh, I think Chair is.
Actually, Chair is.
There we go.
Ruslan.
Hi, gentlemen. Hi, gentlemen.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
We have him.
Yeah.
We have him. So, with that said, I'm, Mr. Chairman, be happy to answer any questions, address any points the board would like us to.
Questions from counselors? Counselor Dobrowski?
Thank you for this presentation. So, to be clear, they, these individuals are, would be in possession of the license, but not owning the property. They're.
That's correct. There's a lease which I attached to the application. So, they have, they have an existing lease.
Just people watching at home don't have.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. So, I appreciate that Mr. Taby has now said that with this go-around, he will do the landscape work. But the obvious question is, why didn't he do it when the current folks?
We kept trying. Just ended up that way. I don't know, just. We push, you know?
But you own the property though, right?
Yeah, but now, that's what I figured. If I step in now, I know what will get done. Anything I say, I do, you know, always.
I'd say the difference too is, it's, may not fully address your point, but I think it's worth noting that a commitment is being made in the presence of the prospective licensee, the lessee, lessee has agreed to it so that we're all on the same page. Whereas before, I think that a certain amount of faith was given, accredited, or lent to the tenants, and some follow-up was done. And the commitment that kind of promised to step in if that licensee failed to fulfill his commitment wasn't really upfront, so it was kind of chasing the tail around a little bit. Whereas now, I think everybody's clear. It needs to be done. I can tell you that Frank owns a lot of property in Wakefield. He keeps his property. He's a very responsible owner. He keeps his properties in good repair, and that he does do what he says he will do. And now this, I don't think, you know, with all due respect to the, to my client, I don't think they need that type of backup or a backup. or a backup commitment, but there it is. And it's something they're in agreement with doing. We can all be on the same page and on the record at the same time.
So I guess I don't want to like quote myself verbatim, but I think I recall referring to this as an asphalt jungle, in that it's all asphalt.
It is, yep.
And so the idea, especially the, you know, and I think that, one thing I've noticed, especially with car dealers across town, you use, whatever the case is, it seems to be this notion that you need to have all asphalt, and it needs to be illuminated as if you're doing an operation, you know, like literally operating on somebody. And I think that this is, this property really has, I think, three aspects to it that are important to me. This is a major thoroughfare, as you know, you know, and Mr. Tavy. And I think the idea of not just, you know, putting, you know, some planting there, but thinking about, all right, having some trees in there, having some, you know, some softscapes in there, and to the potential licensee too, that does not hurt your business. It actually helps your business if you have a more attractive, you know, frontage. And I think there's this notion that you have to have a bunch of inflatable stuff floating around and fake balloons everywhere in order to attract people to your place. From the looks of the vehicles that are on, that have been on the property, I think you're of a caliber that you could have a nice aesthetic there, that everyone could appreciate driving by and still attract the customer base you're looking for. So I guess my request is really threefold. One of them relates to the landscaping piece, to make sure we have, you know, actual, you know, meaningful trees and landscapes and some breaking up of that asphalt, which I think is important, especially along water streets proper. The second relates to the kind of lighting there. Again, I think because we have this high-efficiency lighting now, everyone feels as if you have to go brighter, as bright as possible. Something called, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, dark skies compliant lighting. It provides the kind of lighting that you're looking for, so you can illuminate the lot, so you don't have issues of theft or vandalism, but it doesn't illuminate the entire night sky, and so all the neighbors around. So I know that the lighting there now is quite severe. It's quite bright and quite severe and not directed. It's, it just sprays. So I would ask that there be, I mean, dark skies compliant is real, lighting is really so commonplace now, it's become the new norm. But for some reason, especially auto dealers, they don't have that, and we have similar issues at other places too. So I would ask that you plan on that. And third is, I know that you've had a couple of different businesses here, but being able to have some sort of permanent signage. I know that our economic development director, as well as our senior planner, have gone to great pains, and I sat on a subcommittee with Mr. Mayo for years, looking at how we can have, you know, better signage, you know. And again, if you look at, I think it's highlight now still, right? If you look at that, it's just a vinyl sign that you could get printed at Staples. And that, I'm not saying you're the only, you know, business that's engaged in that, but you're the only business sitting before us where someone's looking for something, you know. And so I would ask that there also be some sort of permanent signage that is in keeping with what our guidelines are relative to that. That would tremendously improve the site, and I think frankly, as an owner of the site, it would increase its value exponentially. So I would just ask that those three conditions be met relative to this transfer. I don't know, I'm trying to recall, Mr. Mullen, whether they can, in allowing the license, we can attach those conditions as a requirement, or?
Yes, you can condition a license.
So I would move that there be, the landscaping as identified, including trees and other softscape areas, especially along Water Street, that there be dark skies compliant lighting installed for the exterior, and that there be permanent signage, you know, that is in keeping with or consistent with our town bylaws.
I would add that the ZBA decision quoting, "Any signage in the building or lot shall conform to the Town of Wakefield sign regulations, and it shall be lit if at all, with only goose neck style lighting, with LED bulbs in the 2700 to 3200 K color temperature range." That doesn't mean a lot to me, but.
It doesn't, because it's actually a much warmer light. So oftentimes, you'll see, and 669 Main Street is one such example, they probably have like 18,000. I mean, it's probably 5,000, but it's incredibly bright and incredibly white. So when you get up higher on the scales, you're talking about you're losing like the yellow tones, and you're bringing in basically a blueish tone to it, which makes it very severe. And actually, what you're seeing on the site now is what it is. 2700 to 3000 or 3200 is brightened with keeping of a more subtle, it gives you plenty of light, but it's the hue of the light, which is going to be more aesthetically pleasing and not so harsh for the neighbors. So that's important, especially, I'll say, in the winter, when you get up into the 4000s, 5000s, that awful white snow makes it very bright, and it's brighter than daylight.
So that condition would be consistent then with the ZBA? And there's one additional condition that's relevant. No additional lighting shall be added to the property beyond what's presently on-site. But we can, that doesn't mean we have to keep it the way it is.
Just the dark skies compliant, it's small money, it makes a big impact. It targets the lighting where you need it and doesn't spray lighting where, you avoid light pollution. And it would be, it's an investment in your property that's small money.
There's no problem.
Terrific. Thank you.
Does the ZBA actually give you dimensions in terms of the green space that Councilor Dombrowski stopped?
It was approved. So the site has been like that for forever.
Right.
So it's not like somebody went in, you know, in recent history and paved it. So there was no change from the ZBA because it was existing. It was just a question of, you know, a site plan approval and a special permit for the use. But, so they approved the layout of the lot, but there was no discussion really about the asphalt because it was already there. It's always been there.
Okay, so from the Counselor's, you know, the conditions he's giving you, I was just wondering if there were, there was actually any, you know, meat to that relative to dimensions and how much would be done?
Yeah, the trees were agreed on previously.
Right.
And actually, when I speak, I spoke to Ruslan about this specifically. He said, well, we could put some trees in there. So I think there's a consensus there.
We're going to put one on each end and kind of one in the middle, set back a little, you know, off the sidewalk. Nothing crazy big, but just something that.
Breaks the plan.
Right.
Add some color. We're in agreement.
You can soften it. I mean, you can, different like, like softscapes, mulchings and the like, all of that that even goes along, some plantings, some perennials, there's some really, especially because that roadway is high-traffic. Our engineering department uses certain plantings. You see them on Albion Street, on the corner of Albion and North Ave. And they're incredibly resilient too, to the rock salts and all those conditions. They come back. They're low to no maintenance. They're all perennials. I mean, those are the sorts of things that I'd like to see, those plantings in there to soften up the space. It's small money.
You'd have to move back, because there's only so many parking spots that are allowed. So we'd have to actually take the lawn away and move back and then put what you're asking for, because there wouldn't be the room. Just telling the truth.
But I'm looking here, you have at least five, before you get to the sidewalk, you have, because you have the shoulder, and then where the cars are parked, I'm looking in that center section, you have a good, probably four, probably five feet from the shoulder to where like the front of the car is.
Well, that's the town.
Yeah, some of it's sidewalk, but there is some room there.
No, because it, no, I'm not talking about, I can show you like there. You've got several feet, like the, I know where the town property ends. That's where the, it's not well-maintained. You've got several feet there. Although, you could go all along that strip, absolutely. Thank you.
We had to say what you.
And our engineering department could work with you on that too. Thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Chen?
Mr. Chen, thank you. Yeah, I would suggest, so it does sound like, and obviously, we don't have the order of conditions from the ZBA in front of us, but it does sound like a lot of what Counselor Dombrowski has requested is contemplated in the ZBA's order. Am I?
Not including the landscaping.
Sorry?
Not including the landscaping.
But there is contemplation in the order of greens, I mean, setting aside like specific trees anywhere.
Yeah, no, there was no mention of landscaping or plantings in the ZBA decision, because it was already, it was an existing condition, the asphalt. But it is something, when I referenced it earlier, it was a commitment made.
Or dark skies compliant. The ZBA didn't do that.
With lighting, so we do have a lighting condition, yeah.
So I guess I would suggest maybe a friendly amendment, Counselor Dombrowski, to your motion, that the license application be approved, subject to the conditions set forth by the zoning board of appeals, and subject to the commitment on the applicant to improve the landscaping. Just so that, just so that we don't do anything that's inadvertently contradictory to the ZBA's order of conditions, since again, we don't have that in front of us.
But we're not. I mean, you're representing, we're not doing anything contradictory to the ZBA. We're more expansive than the ZBA, but it's additive, not.
The landscaping would be additive. The other motions, I think, it consists.
But I don't think ZBA specified dark skies compliant. They.
No, no, that's fine. I have no objection to that, yeah.
And they had the, they just had the 2700, 3200, and they said no more lighting. So we're complimentary. We're not in conflict. I don't think there's any reason we have to water ourselves down.
So again, just respectfully for me, like, we don't have that order in front of us. I mean, I'm not prepared to say what's complimentary or not, and that's.
It's been represented by counsel.
But again, I don't feel comfortable voting for something that is both kind of outside the usual scope of what we talk about when we approve licenses, and again, you know, if we're, if we're adding something on to an existing set of conditions, I feel that creates a different set of obligations, questions, that, you know, personally, as one counselor, I would just like to be able to understand better. I mean, I'm candidly comfortable approving the application, as we do for every standard application, without conditions. If we do want to do something more beyond the conditions and beyond the representation that the applicant made, you know, that is a more complicated discussion.
As counsel before both bodies, do you have any concern about what I have put in as conditions versus what ZBA has?
The client's fine with it.
Thank you. That's all that matters to me. Thank you.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I've known Frank for years, and he has a pretty big operations down on New Salem Street. And if you look at that compared to the other properties around him, he's a very responsible property owner, and I compliment you that, Frank. And the fact that, the only question I had, and I'm not against what you were saying, is the fact that I don't want to have them lose parking spaces where they could be selling cars, you know, to complement what our needs are, and then make it not, you know, not a viable business. So I don't want it to be too much, so maybe you put a plan together and pass it by.
Yeah, I was thinking, just sitting here, I was thinking probably what we could do.
Yeah, okay.
And along the side, the, looking at the building, on the left side, we could do something. And right in front, like what you were saying, we could probably run, I don't know if the trees would work in, but a bunch of plants right in the front, in a, probably only a three-foot-wide swath, going down so the cars can come in and go out either way, and it would be in the middle of it. I think it would work.
That's about the room that's there.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, yeah, that's what we're talking about. We're on the, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking for tree, like oak trees in front of the dealership.
Well, yeah.
Decorative.
Yeah.
You're looking for more.
Plantings of some sort. Is the, Ruslan, are you staying affiliated with KNG or KG? Or is this an offshoot of that, or is this your own thing? Well, KG, KG Motors. Are you staying with KG Motors? Is KG Motors a part of this, or is?
Your audio, your microphone's off.
Good evening, gentlemen. Yes, we are, we are going to quit from KG Motors, yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, AK Motors.
Okay.
Well, there's no need for you to necessarily disassociate from the other entity. But it's important that one of the two be full-time at this site.
Okay.
And that's the, actually, the third kind of criteria under the statute, and that'll be.
Only other concern is, Mr. Arkov, according to the resume, you're here as a short-term consultant. And then launching a business here feels like that, you know, I'm fine with you deciding that this is your career, but it seems like you have a pretty damn good career as is.
Yes, my project is coming to the end. And after completing my project, yeah, I'm gonna switch from international development field to private sector. And I want to do the business, yeah. Once my wife starts, and then later, after finishing my project, I'm gonna also join and completely devote my time and efforts and my investments to car dealership business.
That's what I was alluding to in terms of timing. He'll come on in the summer. I didn't want to prematurely retire.
Yes.
But that's the plan. He'll be on in the summer, full-time.
Yep.
If we don't have any further questions or comments, did you already make a motion?
I haven't yet, so I make a motion that we have, just actually, one more question for you. Are you seeking a display license too?
Am I what?
Is the licensee seeking a display license? Because I don't know if that's indicated.
Yeah, I think that's what it is, right? Selling is a display.
Well, it's a Class II auto sales license.
Same as what it was.
Do we need a display license? Do we need a display license?
You need to state if you're planning to.
So, yes.
Okay, just to arrive on the record, so you don't have issues later. All right, so with that, I would move that we approve this Class II license with the conditions as outlined, relative to landscaping, dark skies compliant lighting, and permanent signage in compliance with our sign rules, regulations, and bylaws.
I'd like to just add one thing. Is it okay to do the landscaping in the spring?
Of course.
Okay.
Landscaping done by spring of '25.
So can I just ask, when you say "as outlined," again, where are we outlining it? What is that in the motion, just so we're clear on what we're voting on?
We have a recording that I think everyone can go back to if there's any question.
You have my word.
But sir, do you have any questions relative to what we've discussed about these conditions?
No, I'm good.
You get it.
I think you do have to.
Yeah, we have to state the motion.
You have to state what the motion is.
And the motion can't be paragraphs and paragraphs and minutes and minutes of video. It has to be a clear motion.
I, so I would move that we approve the Class II license with the conditions as discussed during this meeting, relative to adding landscaping onto the property, relative to ensuring that all outdoor lighting is dark skies compliant, and ensuring that the, there would be permanent signage in compliance in accordance with our rules, regulations, and bylaws. And the landscaping is to be completed by spring of '25. That's what I just said, but I'll say it again.
Display license too, then?
Right, and, right, Class II with display license, correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor, but any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Sherry, I believe we have seven zero on that. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks for coming in.
Best of luck to you.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night. Item 6B is a one-day liquor license, December 3, 2024, at the Albion Cultural Exchange Building.
I would move that we approve the one-day liquor license as a request from the PACP for December 3, 2024.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. We have seven zero. Item 6C, one-day liquor license, December 4, 2024, at the very same Albion Cultural Exchange Building.
I'd move that we approve the second license for the Albion Cultural Exchange on December 4, 2024, one day.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, why did she have to get two for two different days?
Why two for two different days?
Because there's a one-day liquor license.
I know you don't like the rules, but sometimes we have to time them.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed. Looks like seven zeros, Sherry. Item 6D, one-day liquor license.
There were a lot of forms filled out there.
I know, and it's a one-day liquor license.
One of the things Elon's going to go after.
It's going to be two days of business fun. It's going to be wonderful.
A 48-hour, a bender.
One of these days, we'll get there. One-day liquor license, January 11, 2025, at the Americal Civic Center. Oh, this was a graduation, graduating class.
A fundraiser for the class of 2027.
It actually gave me pause when I saw the business name, but class of 2027, looking for a one-day liquor license was, that's in Simpore, right? But it's a fundraiser, yes, for the parents, indeed. So I move that we approve the one-day liquor license for January 11, 2025.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on that? One-day liquor licensing, none. All in favor? All opposed. We have seven zero again, Sherry. We are ripping through the agenda. Item seven is approval of minutes of our November 4, 2024, town council meeting minutes. I made a couple of small changes. I made a couple of small changes, which Sherry has incorporated, I believe. Just type those.
I move that we approve the November 4th, 2024, town council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? All was in favor? All opposed? Seven zero, Sherry, for the minutes. Item eight, announcements. Do any of the counselors have announcements this evening? Counselor Chine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of announcements. First of all, I've been joking with people. It takes a lot to get me excited about a parking lot, but I am excited because the Landrigan Field parking lot, the new and improved parking lot here at the high school is open. And, you know, this has been one of the challenges, I think, in terms of traffic and parking here at the high school over the last couple of months. So that's a big milestone in the project. Certainly one that has a pretty tangible impact here at the facility even as we're watching structural steel come up. So thanks for the project team to work through that and thanks to all the students, faculty and everyone who uses the building for their patients. Did want to highlight just a couple of holiday events that are coming up because we're in that time of year. And so there is a Hartshorn House Christmas Tea and Open House coming up on Sunday, December 8th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Great event and one that I look forward to every year. Another thing coming up more recently, which is not a holiday event, but one where maybe you can kind of find some gifts for your holiday shopping is a local author fair at the BB Library this coming Saturday, also from 1:00 to 4:00, so please check that out. And then finally, just wanted to mention, I do have office hours tomorrow night at the library from 5:30 to 7:00, so come by and say hello.
Thank you, Counselor. Any announcements from other counselors? Counselor Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple. One was actually just a question for you, Mr. Mayo. Do we currently have any sort of, or actually, Mr. Mullen, maybe too, any sort of regulation relative to outdoor lighting brightness? I don't believe we do.
You mean on people's homes?
Or businesses in this case.
Other than special permits, if there's a requirement, special permit mentioned, I think only other item would come under a nuisance.
Because I mentioned this because I would encourage folks to check out 669 Main Street. That's the, what, North Suburban Eye Associates? They, it looks like they're filming a movie at night. They have this incredibly bright lighting that is shining down. And it's actually even distracting when you're driving by. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's possible to perhaps add that to a future agenda to understand what options we have relative to that, I don't know ultimately whose purview that would fall under.
We can see if there's, or I can see if there's a current special permit on that building. Maybe, and maybe not.
Because this was newly added within the last, I'd say, three months or thereabouts. It's very different.
You may have noticed it driving by.
I haven't. I just think it's funny that it's the I building. Maybe they need extra brightness, but I haven't, I haven't noticed it.
I'm very familiar with that building, having been inside recently.
So I just put that, just for a future agenda. And it wasn't, not unanticipated, so I don't know where it fell. And then I also wanted to really compliment the Veterans Advisory Board for a tremendous Veterans Day service. It was outstanding. I actually think it was the best we've ever had. I think the turnout was great. I think the speakers were powerful. Commander Shelby Nickaton, the first female commander of the USS Thomas Hudner, Wakefield's own. It was really moving and it was really inspiring too. And, you know, she had mentioned, she started off by saying, you know, "Hello Wakefield warriors." And she really was able to tie her own experiences to her community and her upbringing, which I think was great. And we do have an incredibly patriotic community that we live in. I'm really proud of that. So congratulations to the Veterans Advisory Board. Thanks for all those folks that came out. Thanks for all the veterans who were there especially. And thank you for your service and for your family's dedication and sacrifice as well. Otherwise, just want to remind everyone, we have Thanksgiving coming up. Wishing everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And please don't forget that if you're looking to burn off some of those calories on Saturday, Small Business Saturday, incredibly important opportunity for our local businesses, a great way to get your shopping done. And, you know, there are so many opportunities for even just like restaurant gift cards, all the different types of services we have in town and then obviously all the different specialty shops too. So please support local, avoid Amazon, support local and check out Small Business Saturday. Thank you all. And thank you WCAT as always for putting on a great production.
Any other announcements, Counselor Butt?
Just a couple of things, other events coming up this holiday season. Our annual parade that we all love is having a fundraiser on Wednesday from 12:00 to 8:00 at Main Street Grill and Tap House where a certain percentage will go back to the parade. So if you can go there from 12:00 to 8:00, order some food. As Counselor Dabrowski mentioned, Thanksgiving is coming up. The cross-country team is organizing a turkey trot in the morning, 8:00 AM, a fundraiser for them. So you can also walk, you don't have to run it, but it is a great race every year. To continue shopping small business, the farmer's market is having their holiday market this Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00. It's nice to see that come back. They'll have two dates, but this Saturday is the first date. And finally, I mentioned this last week, but the, the Wakefield will be having an interfaith service around Thanksgiving and it will be at the First Baptist Church, so the newly built Baptist church on Tuesday. So next Tuesday, the 26th, from 7:00, starting at 7:00 PM. And we hope to see a lot of people there. And then finally, one thing for town administrator Mayo. I'm hoping you can give us an update about the displaced people from the fire yesterday and also pass on things to our public safety who took care of that.
Yeah, thank God that they got there quickly. The fire started outside and merely affected one half of the building more than the other. No one was hurt. I think half of the people will be back quickly, is kind of the way that the fire went. Most of them are at the Sheridan right now, which we worked with a red cross to place them. So long-term, I don't know. We'll have to see what happens when they get in and look at it. But they did a great job by fire department and there was no injuries, which is the main thing.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Chairman Plaine. I just want to mention that over the last few weeks, I had an opportunity to visit six of our seven public schools along with members of the school committee. I know I'm retired. I have time to go to those things at 10:30 in the morning on Tuesday. But I want to thank Dr. Lyons and the school staff for their hospitality. And I especially want to thank the teachers and the students for how gracious they were as we just walked into their classroom. And whether, from the Doyle all the way to the high school, it's amazing how respectful the children are. They're interested that you're in there. Sometimes they actually ask you questions. They'll show you what they're working on. It was, you know, my kids are in their 30s. I haven't been in the school system in a long time. It was nice and refreshing to go back into school and just to see the quality of education that we provide to our students here in Wakefield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other announcements? Yeah, we'll just finish up by seconding the Veterans Day ceremony. And don't forget the singers, those high school singers. They are fantastic.[1700.94]